May I invite all of you to be seated and get ready? We welcome to start facing. Okay, let's get started. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us on lunchtime. It is a great honor and a pleasure to welcome you to our special event dedicated to the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. Today, we want to take stock of where we stand with the implementation of the declaration and also put some focus on the process leading to the adoption of the Kyoto Declaration in March 2021. It's good to know those to know the thoughts of those who have directly engaged themselves in the preparation of the Kyoto Declaration. And I'm very pleased that we will have two different panels today. Let me now introduce our distinguished speakers and panelists joining us in person or online. First, a very warm welcome to Ms. Gada Wali, Executive Director of UNODC, and the members of today's first panel, Mr. Jun Tsushima, State Minister of Justice of Japan, online; His Excellency Ambassador Xavier Sticker of France, who should be, he should be, who should be joining very, very soon in person; and Ms. Noriko Shibata, Assistant Vice Minister of Justice of Japan; Mrs. Valery Ruvo, Chief of the UNODC Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice Section; yes; Mr. Taro Morinaga, Director of UNAFI, who will be, I imagine, online; Mrs. Anna Ambagi Del Frate, Chair of the Alliance of NGOs on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice. So welcome Ambassador Sticker. Our first group of panelists will speak about various initiatives launched since the adoption of the Kyoto Declaration to ensure that the commitments are translated into action. These initiatives focus on different levels: the intergovernmental level, especially through the Commission on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice, but at programmatic level, as well as efforts at the national and regional level. In the second part, we will hear from national experts who participated in the negotiation of the Kyoto Declaration, and let me extend a very warm welcome to our national experts that I would introduce in alphabetical order of countries' names. Mrs. Lucy Ange, General Counsel and Director, External Relations, Criminal Law or Policy Section of Justice Canada, in person, welcome; Mr. Kemel Mohammed, Ambassador, Counselor, Permanent Mission of Egypt to the United Nations in Vienna, in person, welcome; Mr. Carlos Alberto Garcia Reyes, Minister, Counselor, and Alternate Permanent Representative of the Permanent Mission Guatemala to the United Nations in Vienna, in person, welcome. Mr. Luigi Dipamonti, Service for Legal Affairs, Diplomatic Disputes, and International Agreements, Acting Head of Office, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Italy, who will join us online; Mr. Asaid Nuredim, Deputy Permanent Representative of the Permanent Mission of Singapore, who participate in passing, welcome; Mrs. Virginia Prue, Attorney Advisor, Office of the Legal Advisor in the Department of State of the United States of America, who will join us in passing, welcome. As we know, the CCPCJ is a principal policymaking body of the United Nations in the field of crime prevention and criminal justice. It provides a platform to member states to improve their action to combat national and transnational crime, as well as enhance the efficiency and fairness of the criminal justice administration systems. Scaling up the implementation of crime prevention and criminal justice policy commitments is one of the key priorities of our commission. With the adoption of March 2021 of the Kyoto Declaration, we all committed once again ourselves to the marginal approach in preventing and combating crimes and promoting the rule of law at local, national, regional, and international levels. We also reaffirmed the role of the United Nations Office of Drugs and Crime as the leading entity of the United Nations system in supporting member states in this regard. The Kyoto Declaration called upon the Commission to adopt appropriate policy and operational measures for the follow-up to the declaration and to identify innovative ways to make use of information on progress made in its implementation. The Kyoto Declaration also invited the Commission to engage with other relevant stakeholders, including the Institutes of the United Nations Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice Program Network in order to strengthen global partnership in advancing crime prevention, criminal justice, and the rule of law toward the achievement of the 2030 agenda. A lot has happened since the adoption of the Kyoto Declaration, and several operational measures were developed to ensure its follow-up. In November 2021, the CCPCJ successfully conducted its first round of thematic discussions focused on the pillar, crime prevention. The second round will be held in the second half of this year, addressing the pillar, advancing the criminal justice system. The expert discussions on crimes that affect the environment were also organized already this year, and we'll hear more about on this issue from the Ambassador Sticker of France today. Japan, on its part, has been exerting itself to implementing commitments made in the Kyoto Declaration in cooperation with UNODC, including through the holding of the first Global Youth Forum in October 2021, the first meeting of the Criminal Justice Forum for Asia and the Pacific Crime AP in February 2022, and the expert group meeting on the development of a new set of UN standards and norms to prevent reoffending in April this year. With this, now I have the pleasure to give the floor to Ms. Gada Wali, Executive Director of UNODC, to kick off our discussion. You have the floor.
Thank you, Ambassador, dear Ambassador Hikihara, Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Momentum starts with commitment, and with this in mind, I would like to begin by thanking the Chair of this CCPCG session, Ambassador Hikihara, and the government of Japan for their steadfast efforts in keeping the global momentum going to implement the Kyoto Declaration. The Kyoto Declaration on Advancing Crime Prevention, Criminal Justice, and the Rule of Law was adopted at the 14th United Nations Congress on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice in March 2021, which was one of the first major hybrid conferences held during the pandemic. The Kyoto Crime Congress brought together record 5,600 participants, and its declaration was a collective call to action to strengthen international cooperation, develop multi-stakeholder partnerships, and enhance technical assistance to respond to the increasingly transnational, organized, and complex nature of crime. This event, on the margins of the Crime Commission session, is an important opportunity to showcase the progress achieved so far and to look ahead to the next steps needed to keep making progress towards SDG 16 and all of the Sustainable Development Goals. In the Kyoto Declaration, governments recognized the importance of integrated solutions to promote equal access to justice, mainstream gender and empower youth, safeguard children and victims' rights, improve prison conditions, confront the economic dimensions of crime and corruption, prevent terrorism, and tackle diverse forms of crime, from cybercrime, human trafficking, and migrant smuggling, to crimes that affect the environment and the trafficking of drugs, firearms, and of cultural property. The Kyoto Declaration also called upon this Commission to follow up on policy commitments, which it has done through a work plan addressing four pillars of action, namely advancing crime prevention, advancing the criminal justice system, promoting the rule of law, and promoting international cooperation and technical assistance to prevent and address all forms of crime. I'm proud to say that UNODC's support for this has led to an active and engaged dialogue with experts taking part from member states, UN entities, international and regional partners, as well as academia and civil society. The thematic discussions held in February on crimes that affect the environment mandated by General Assembly Resolution 76185 and supported by France explored urgent threats to people and planet, a timely debate as the world prepares for the UNFCCC COP27 in Sharm El Sheikh in November. The CCPCJ session brought together experts to share good practices and lessons learned in preventing and combating posed by wildlife and forest crime, crimes in the fisheries sector, illegal mining, and the waste trafficking. Thematic discussions have helped to raise awareness of the need for crime prevention and criminal justice responses to tackle the triple threat of climate change, biodiversity loss, and pollution, and I welcome the efforts of this session to continue this important debate. I also welcome the experts' meeting held in April to develop UN standards and norms to prevent reoffending through rehabilitation and reintegration. UNODC is also proud to support regional initiatives to promote offender treatment and rehabilitation, as well as mutual legal assistance in criminal matters. This includes the Criminal Justice Forum for Asia and the Pacific, which was launched in February to provide a platform enabling practical law enforcement cooperation and information sharing. Most importantly, taking forward crime prevention commitments made in Kyoto requires the meaningful engagement and participation of all stakeholders, especially young people. UNODC has been working with Japan and other member state partners to empower youth as active agents of positive change in their communities through regional workshops and the Global Youth Forum for a Culture of Lawfulness last October. In order to educate stakeholders and raise broader awareness of the Kyoto Declaration and its contribution to achieving the SDGs, our office has also developed an e-learning tool which can be assessed through the UNODC website. The e-learning course also outlines UNODC's technical assistance, offering in support of the declaration, ranging from comprehensively addressing the treatment of offenders in line with the UN Common Position on Incarceration and the Nelson Mandela Rules, to building capacities to achieve SDG 16 targets to tackle violence against children, arms and illicit financial flows, corruption, crime, and terrorism. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, the Crime Congress have long played an essential role in developing and agreeing holistic justice solutions to strengthen the rule of law and help build resilient, inclusive societies that leave no one behind. Our joint action is more crucial than ever in the face of multiplying crises and conflicts in every region of the world. I would like to thank the government of Japan once again for the sustained commitment to ensuring effective follow-up to the Kyoto Declaration. UNODC remains committed in supporting these efforts, including in the preparation for the next round of thematic discussions on the second pillar, criminal justice, to be held in November. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our civil society partners, in particular the Alliance of NGOs on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice, who I'm glad to see are with us today. Thank you, and I look forward to your interventions.
I send the Executive Director for Ha Li Max to step on our discussion today, and I appreciate once again her leadership for leading the UNODC. Now, let me give the floor to Mr. Jun Tsushima, State Minister of Justice of Japan, who will address the Commission via pre-recorded video statement.
Gentlemen, I am Tsushima Jun, State Minister of Justice of Japan. I am very pleased that many people from around the world are attending this chair's special event to follow up on the Kyoto Congress. At the outset, I wish to thank Ambassador Hikihara, Chair of this CCPCJ, Ms. Gada Wali, and UNODC for their hard work in organizing this event. Ladies and gentlemen, Japan is promoting justice affairs diplomacy, which is an initiative to promote fundamental values such as the rule of law and respect for fundamental human rights globally in order to realize a society in which such values are respected in all countries around the world. Unfortunately, the international committee is now facing with Russia's aggression against Ukraine, which is a unilateral attempt to change the status quo by force, and many innocent lives are being lost. Japan strongly condemns it. At the same time, I believe that we need to continue promoting justice affairs diplomacy with an even stronger will during such difficult times in order to protect these values and contribute to a peaceful and secure world. In March last year, the Kyoto Congress was held in Japan. It has been 51 years since the last Congress was held in Japan. The Kyoto Congress was concluded successfully with a record high number of participants from countries and regions. This marked an important milestone for justice affairs diplomacy. The outcome document of the Kyoto Congress, the Kyoto Declaration, confirmed that the rule of law is the foundation for sustainable development. Against this background, the Kyoto Declaration sets course for the United Nations and its member states toward the achievement of the SDGs by its target year 2030. For example, the Kyoto Declaration highlights the importance of promoting international cooperation in criminal justice and engaging in mult stakeholder partnerships. It's a great achievement for the international community to jointly confirm the importance of the rule of law and cooperation in this regard. I'm confident that the importance of this achievement is becoming ever more clear today. I understand that member states and the UN are already working toward the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. I wish to express my sincere respect to your efforts. Japan, for its part, wishes to play a leadership role in the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration and is working with the UNODC on three important projects. These are youth empowerment, strengthening cooperation among criminal justice practitioners, and creating UN standards and norms on reducing reoffending. Ms. Shibata Noriko, Vice Assistant Minister of Justice, will describe three projects in detail later. Distinguished speakers will also introduce efforts undertaken by their countries or institutions. Therefore, I hope this event will provide an opportunity to learn about advanced and innovative initiatives so that the international community can implement better policies. Furthermore, I understand that there will be a panel discussion among experts who took part in the drafting and negotiation of the Kyoto Declaration. I hope that by hearing their views and understanding the passion that underlies the Kyoto Declaration, we can add momentum to its implementation. I wish to conclude by expressing my sincere hope that this event will advance the Kyoto Declaration and respect for fundamental values such as the rule of law throughout the world. Thank you.
I thank Mr. Tsushima for his presentation. Now, I would like to continue our discussion and invite the distinguished panelists of the first panel to, or the first part of our discussion, and now, let me first give the floor to the first speaker, Ambassador Xavier Sticker of France, to address the Commission on some good example of concrete intergovernmental initiatives. So Ambassador Sticker, you have the floor.
Well, let me join Executive Director Radawali in thanking Ambassador Hikihara and Japan, indeed, for convening this session, because the Kyoto Declaration provides a vision, but it has also a lot of substance, and it is very clear, and we have to work and work very hard to make sure that when the time comes of the assessment of what it will have given, we have a lot of substance also in terms of content. It has been three years since France started to take initiatives here in the context of UNODC and of the CCPCJ and UN conventions under UNODC on environmental crimes, or crimes that affect the environment as it has been agreed in this context. And this initiative has led to reaching a consensual definition of crimes that affect the environment, a broad definition encompassing one, covering a number of areas that until then were split, and therefore made it easier for criminals to use the loopholes. We got this definition in the Kyoto Declaration, together with the common acknowledgement that this is a serious crime when perpetrated in an organized fashion and with a transnational dimension. And we committed also as countries to make every effort to implement that and to cooperate on that and to use the tools provided by the UN conventions against crimes that affect the environment. Of course, as diplomats, it would have been too easy to consider that after agreeing resolution also last year at the CCPCJ of having the Kyoto Congress as the overarching forum and the definition in the Declaration, either the work had been done or that the next stage should be another negotiation and another resolution. But now, let's look ahead, and where are we awaited? We are awaited on delivery, and that's actually where the emphasis is for now and for all of us as countries and UNODC, last but not least. What are the areas on which we can work? As Executive Director Radawali mentioned, there has been the experts' discussion in February here in this place with 800 participants worldwide, and that was very important and crucial, because that was the only meeting that was prescripted and defined and determined by the resolutions. So it was very important to make the best use of it. Executive Director Radawali very kindly agreed on this occasion to greet the French Environment Minister, who signed with her an action plan, UNODC France Action Plan on environmental crime and crimes that affect the environment. What have we done as our contribution to the effort? First, we have ensured that practitioners develop their connections and that we pull those forces together and that north and south, from continent to continent, from region to region, and there are more and more interconnections on how to deal with the crimes, on how to facilitate the transfer of information and the international cooperation. Another area on which there is a lot of work, and we have done so, is on the development assistance. For us, that's the French Development Agency, which is mapping out its existing projects and looking how to develop its chain of project in order to do more, and it's important to look at the pools of resources that so far have not been exploited, and we have spotted French facility for the global environment that we hope will be a contributor to that effort in conjunction with UNODC. And training is another area on which work is being conducted. Our Central Office Against Environmental Crime, which depends on the French gendarmerie, is developing a platform to that effect. So that's what we have done at the national level. We take the effort to the European Union level, and I should mention in this connection that as we speak during the French rotating presidency of the Council, one of the major outcomes will be the revision of the 2008 Directive on the Protection of the Environment in Criminal Matters that will elevate the capacities of the European Union in this area. And Executive Director Radawali very kindly agreed to take the floor on the occasion of an event in Marseille in the next few days. Last, the effort, but last again but not least, the effort is to the international level, and UNODC is central to that. We have been very impressed by the work conducted by UNODC in this area and how UNODC has reorganized itself on the fight against crimes that affect the environment and climate, its own structure, how UNODC has outlined its strategic approach to the matter, and how it is connecting with other relevant international organizations also to better deliver in that area. That effort will not be by UNODC alone, or I should rephrase that, we should make absolutely sure that we do not leave UNODC alone, and that each country with capacities and the willingness to act is there to contribute and participate and join in this effort. I should also mention the private sector, which we have already approached in France, but probably it could be done more but probably it could be done more broadly. And one of the major outcomes by UNODC will be next year, the first ever global report on crimes that affect the environment, that will also enhance our knowledge, our capacity to better act in this area. Again, let's act together. Let's look frankly how we organize ourselves practically to help UNODC in that effort. I leave that open at this stage, but probably we can do something. And let's be absolutely mindful that, well, what we bring is the flow of small streams, but as the flow grows, then we will have a mighty river, and the aim is to be able to have a very mighty river, will not be at the mouth of the river, but it will be quite large when the Kyoto Declaration expires and transfer the baton to the next UN Crime Congress. Thank you.
I thank Ambassador Sticker for his insightful comment and also for the leading role that France is playing for our fight against the crimes that affect the environment. Now, we are going to look at the programmatic levels, and we have two excellent panelists at this level. The first panelist is Ms. Noriko Shibata, Assistant Vice Minister of Justice of Japan, who will be joining us online. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am Shibata Noriko, Assistant Vice Minister of Justice of Japan. At outset, I wish to thank you and UNODC for organizing this special event to follow up on the Kyoto Declaration. As our State Minister of Justice, Mr. Tsushima, mentioned in his opening remarks, in order to lead the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration under the Justice of Youth Diplomacy Initiative, we are actively pursuing the following three pillars. The first pillar is establishing regional networks for criminal justice practitioners. The Kyoto Declaration, in particular paragraphs five and sixty-three, calls for the strengthening of international cooperation to combat crime and the building of regional networks to facilitate cooperation among criminal justice practitioners. In order to realize this in the Asia-Pacific region, Japan and UNODC jointly organized the first criminal justice forum for Asia in the Pacific this February. The meeting brought together nearly 170 experts in the field of mutual legal assistance in offender treatment and rehabilitation from 20 countries and institutions. The two-day meeting deepened mutual understanding of other countries' legal systems and practices, as well as identified technical assistance needs. Positive views were shared among participants, and Japan looks forward to convening the second meeting next year. There will be a side event dedicated to the CREAM AP tomorrow from 12:00 p.m., noon Vienna time. This side event will elaborate the details of the CREAM AP, so I hope you will be able to observe this event. The second pillar is empowering youth to support crime prevention efforts. In February last year, the Kyoto Congress Youth Forum was held just before the Kyoto Congress. Its successful outcome was widely recognized, and the Kyoto Declaration, namely paragraph thirty, calls for efforts to empower youth by organizing youth forums and other initiatives. In order to promote the rule of law, Japan decided to hold the Global Youth Forum for a Culture of Lawfulness on a regular basis. The first meeting was successfully concluded in Tokyo in October last year, with the participation of nearly 120 youth from 41 countries. The recommendations adopted as the outcome were presented to the CCPCG chair during the interstitial meeting last October by a youth representative who participated in the youth forum as the chair. We hope that the views of the youth will be a valuable contribution to the work of member states. Japan will continue to support bringing the voices of the youth to the international community to promote the rule of law. The third pillar is promoting the reducing of reoffending globally. The Kyoto Declaration, namely paragraphs thirty-seven and onwards, contains detailed measures to reduce reoffending, including fostering multi-stakeholder partnerships. It demonstrated the need to create UN standards and norms on this topic, which is currently absent. Therefore, Japan decided to lead the creation of such UN standards and norms. In order to reduce reoffending, we will offer our experience gained through Japan's 130 years history of hogoshi, or volunteer probation offices, and multi-stakeholder partnerships. Just last month, an ex-quad group meeting was held with the participation of many experts from around the globe. There will be a side event to elaborate this initiative. It will take place tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. Vienna time, so I would be grateful if you could make yourselves available. Furthermore, in order to continue with the good progress made so far, Japan has tabled a resolution at this CCPCG session to create the mandate to convene an intergovernmental expert group meeting to discuss the new standards and norms. We would be grateful to have your support for this resolution. In closing, I hope that the exchange of views and knowledge throughout this special event will serve as a catalyst to further promote our efforts to implement the Kyoto Declaration. I thank you.
I thank Ms. Shibata for her statement, and now let me invite Ms. Valérie Leboeuf, Chief of the UNODC Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice. Ms. Leboeuf, you have the floor.
Thank you, Excellency, Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. A lot has indeed happened since the adoption of the Kyoto Declaration. I am honored to be part of this distinguished panel and reflect on the impact the Declaration has already made on UNODC work in crime prevention and criminal justice. I will be referring to a few examples among many more, drawing them from the work of my section, the Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice section. The Declaration dedicates a whole pillar to crime prevention, focusing on preventing children and youth victimization and empowering youth to play an active role in crime prevention. Since the adoption of the Declaration, UNODC has reached more than 15,000 young people in 15 countries with a provision of sports-based life skills training in schools and community settings. Close to 46% of these youth are girls and young women with life skills training specifically targeting their empowerment. We also held several consultations with young people to help generate solutions for youth crime and violent extremism. The Declaration includes a number of innovative recommendations, and as one example, I will refer to those on improving criminal investigations through the use of evidence-based interviewing methods. Such interviewing methods are geared at obtaining voluntary statements instead of coercing confessions, which, as we know, often lead to wrongful convictions. The notion of non-coercive interviewing is well-known in the human rights arena, but the Kyoto Declaration addresses it from an additional angle, the angle of efficiency, the need to obtain the best evidence and ensure quality criminal investigations, prosecutions, and convictions. I am happy to report that we are implementing a new project jointly with the Norwegian Center for Human Rights, and that we will be launching this week the new e-learning modules on investigative interviewing. Let me mention also in the policing area, our efforts to advance gender-sensitive policing with new projects in a number of member states, and the launch of our new handbook on police services for women and girls victims of violence with UN Women and the International Association of Women Police. Under its chapter on promoting the rule of law, the Declaration focuses on access to justice and equal treatment without discriminations by criminal justice institutions. UNODC has identified access to legal aid as one of the most powerful tools to access justice for vulnerable groups. We are conducting a study of current practices for addressing racist hate crimes through legal aid and ensure inclusion of the needs of persons facing racial discrimination in legal aid provision. Building on the technical assistance we have provided on access to legal aid for women in West Africa, we are now developing a bilingual training tool and e-learning module in this area. We are also cooperating with UNHCR on enhancing access to legal aid in humanitarian settings. The need to improve prison conditions and address prison overcrowding also features prominently in the Kyoto Declaration. In various countries in which UNODC works, we recognize that the degree of poor and dysfunctional prison infrastructure and material conditions is so severe that it effectively bars compliance with core minimum prison standards. UNODC, therefore, is engaged in various countries in prison refurbishment, infrastructure, and procurement support. Our assistance is not geared at expanding prison estates, but it is strongly coupled with efforts to reduce prison populations. We help criminal justice institutions identify entry points for an enhanced use of non-custodial measures and for the reduction in the use of pre-trial detention. Finally, the Kyoto Declaration places a strong emphasis on reducing reoffending, leading as one of the Congress's outcomes to the launch of an initiative to help members to... An initiative to develop model strategies on reducing reoffending. In this, the Kyoto Congress places itself in a lineage of crime congresses that have been active in developing and promoting the considerable body of UN standards and norms in crime prevention and criminal justice that exist today. Through our work on the ground with national counterparts in the areas covered by the standards and norms, we at UNODC can testify to how appreciated and used the standards and norms are by policymakers and practitioners who find in them internationally recognized principles and flexible practical guidance on all issues of criminal justice. Preventing reoffending is one of the main goals of criminal justice systems and crime prevention strategies. UNODC appreciates the government of Japan's vision in launching this process, and we are thrilled to support that vision as a substantive secretariat of this initiative. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thank Ms. Leboeuf for her presentation, recalling us some of the valuable efforts in the field of crime prevention and criminal justice on the ground level. I thank you. The UNODC has been closely working with the program network institutes in the follow-up to the Kyoto Declaration. It is therefore my pleasure to welcome our next speaker, Mr. Taro Morinaga, Director of the United Nations Asia and Far East Institute for the Prevention of Crime and the Treatment of Offenders, UNIFA, who will be joining us online. Mr. Morinaga, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you for giving me the floor. It's my honor and pleasure to say a few words here on behalf of UNIFA, just to briefly introduce some examples of what we have been doing and will be doing on the ground in contributing to the implementation of the Declaration. Would you skip to the next slide? Go to the next place, please, yes. Thank you. Oh, no. Okay, yeah, that's okay. UNIFA, as the oldest PTI, has been conducting practitioner-oriented training courses and other activities for 60 years since its inception. UNIFA is 60 years old, still one year younger than me, but it has been a long time. You can see our core activities lined up in this slide. UNIFA worked hard in collaboration with the Japanese government and other international institutions and institutions towards bringing the Kyoto Congress to success, and itself also organized the workshop too on prevention of reoffending in collaboration with the UNODC and fellow PTIs. So quite naturally, we got ourselves involved in activities aimed at the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. Although all of UNIFA's, I can say that all of UNIFA's regular activities are closely related to, in one way or the other, contribute to the realization of what is contemplated in the Kyoto Declaration, we decided to do more. With the help of Japan International Cooperation Agency, known as the JAIKA, we started new international training courses, which covered issues of prevention of reoffending as well as victim protection measures, both of which are mentioned in the Kyoto Declaration as very important issues to be addressed. So now, we have five regular international courses each every year instead of four. Would you go to the next slide, slightly? Next slide? Yes, thank you. And another example I would like to show you here is the very unique course targeting the young generation. Youth is very important, everybody says that, and they are those people who will or have already started to shoulder crime prevention, criminal justice, and offender rehabilitation in a high-global society. Inviting the youth to express their views had already started at the 13th Crime Congress in Doha, Qatar. This practice continued at Kyoto Congress. In parallel with these sessions of the Congress, the Youth Forum, as already mentioned, was organized. The outcomes of the discussions there were recorded at the Congress. And seeing these quite impressive and positive results of such events, UNIFA thought, okay, it would be quite meaningful to create more of these younger generation to speak up, to be influential. And that is why we started the, what we call, the Youth International Training, which you see in this slide. You see the youngsters gathering online, hopefully, but how happy they look. And participants, mostly students, seem to have very much enjoyed the session and discussions. And the outcomes were truly remarkable, wide variety of constructive opinions and originating from their fresh and flexible minds and thoughts, were laid on the table, discussed from every angle. I'm sure that these will surely influence and also inspire, actually, the current trends of discussion in the international community. Believe me, the world has a bright, bright Uh, believe me, the world has a bright, bright future. Last slide, please. Uh, those were just a few examples of UNAFE's efforts towards, uh, the implementation of the Kyoto, uh, Declaration. We are doing more, and for that, please look up side of ours. Thank you for your kind attention. Thank you.
I thank Mr. Morinaga for his intervention, highlighting the importance of our being played by the PNIs in the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. One of the last speakers of this panel is Ms. Anna Alvaji Del Frate, Chair of the Alliance of NGOs on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice. Uh, the Commission has been closely cooperating with this alliance as participation of the civil society in the work of the Commission contributes quite a lot for the meaningful follow-up of the Kyoto Declaration. So Ms. Alvaji Del Frate, you have the floor.
Thank you Ambassador Hikihara, and thank you for your very kind words. Indeed, thank you very much for the invitation. One year after the Kyoto Congress and well into its implementation process, it is now time to look ahead and identify how each of us can meaningful contribute to the Kyoto Declaration's success. As its predecessors, the Kyoto Declaration foresees an important role for a multitude of stakeholders, including the academic scientific community, civil society, as well as the private sector. Over time, the opportunities for cooperation between UN bodies, states, and civil society have become broader and should allow for a better mutual understanding. For example, occasions such as the CCPCJ thematic discussions on the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration last November provide a very important productive exchange of knowledge which was welcomed by civil society. The landscape of civil society organizations operating in areas relevant to the Kyoto Declaration includes a wide range of NGOs, from the large international NGOs to much smaller locally-based initiatives. The role of the latter is of utmost importance. Many local NGOs play a crucial role in community-based crime prevention, reintegration of offenders. They assist victims of trafficking in persons, smuggling of migrants, gender-based violence, and other serious forms of crime. The work of NGOs at the local level is something that should be taken into special consideration. Moreover, in a number of countries, access to justice and services to victims is not equal among the population. The key principle of the 2030 Agenda Leave No One Behind requires close cooperation of all relevant stakeholders on the territory, including both urban and rural areas to promote inclusive, non-discriminatory, and gender-responsive approaches for crime prevention and services. This requires full participation and contribution of civil society in all relevant fora and processes. Many local NGOs who carry out crime prevention programs in their respective territories contribute with their work and examples to the overall baggage of knowledge of good practices for the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. We look forward to ensuring that their voices can be heard and brought to the attention of the international community. This may require an extra effort in terms of a coordinated programmatic and financial support. In conclusion, in the spirit of Sustainable Development Goal 16, civil society will be glad to participate with member states and UNODC in the next steps and initiatives aimed at increasing the exchange of knowledge on implementation of the Kyoto Declaration with a view to promote peaceful and inclusive societies. Thank you.
I thank Ms. Alvaji Del Frate for her statement, uh, remembering us, the law of the civil society in our common effort of implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. And, uh, now let me thank all the speakers for joining us today to... Uh, okay, okay. Um, this secretary told me that there are a number of delegations who'd like to ask the floor, but we are going to pick up questions and comments after the second part of this, uh, this event. Uh, so please be patient for the time being. Um, with this, the, uh, I, eh, would like to conclude the first part of this, uh, event and, uh, now I have the pleasure to invite you to our, uh, second part, the panel discussion, and hand over to my colleague, Mr. Jun Yamazaki, for the, uh, for the moderation of the discussion.
Thank you very much for your patience. So excellencies, distinguished representatives, ladies and gentlemen, dear colleagues, it is a great honor and pleasure to moderate this exciting panel discussion today. Uh, briefly, let me introduce today's, uh, the aim of today's panel discussion. So this panel discussion aims to reconfirm the significance, relevance, and effectiveness of Kyoto Declaration, and it also aims to further facilitate, uh, these initiatives to, to implement the Kyoto Declaration by hearing the unique experience, passions, and perspectives from national experts who actually participated in the negotiation of drafting the Kyoto Declaration. So with this, I would like to start the panel discussion. So our first distinguished speaker is Ms. Lucy Andrew. Ms. Andrew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the kind invitation. Uh, the first Crime Congress I attended was the Eighth Congress in Cuba in nineteen ninety, and I see that some colleagues here were also there. Needless to say, a lot has changed since then. The Crime Commission had not yet been established. That would be done the following year in Versailles. At that time, the main raison d'être for the congresses was to adopt norms and standards and model treaties that were informed by a strong expert's participation in the years preceding the Congress. And indeed, during the Eighth Congress, a dozen of them were eventually adopted by the General Assembly, ranging from treatment of prisoners, cultural heritage, to the prevention of juvenile delinquency issues that are still very, very relevant today. What has changed since Cuba is how the Commission now sends the outcome of the congresses to the General Assembly. This change in two thousand, when the Tenth Congress in Vienna was tasked no longer with adopting resolutions, model treaties, or norms and standards, but rather with preparing a single declaration. At that time, the Commission was even tasked following the Tenth Congress with developing plans of action aimed at implementing the Declaration. Little anybody know how these plans of action finalized on September eighth, two thousand and one, and containing a plan of action on terrorism would prove so useful with its avenues for global action in the aftermath of the tragic September eleventh terrorist attacks. The tradition of developing a Congress Declaration for transmission to the General Assembly continued with Thailand, followed by Salvador, and we, some of us, still remember returning to our hotels on the last day of the Congress after the adoption of the Congress with the sun rising after the negotiations, only a few hours before the Declaration could be adopted. And then there was Doha, which was the first time the Declaration was adopted on the first day of the Congress, allowing participants to participate in all the agenda items and workshops and side events. And then came the Kyoto Congress, the first Congress organized in a hybrid fashion, and kudos to the government of Japan and the UNODC to have succeeded so brilliantly in meeting those challenges. It was also a first with the government of Japan ensuring over a period of more or less three years, and certainly a longer time than previous congresses, that all the voices could be heard and different viewpoints could be reconciled, and all of that before the pandemic. Yes, the Kyoto Declaration is not the short and concise document that is always called for by the General Assembly and all of us. But on the other hand, how could it be with all these crime-related issues needing to be addressed at the international level? What counts, and what I would wish to pay tribute to the government of Japan for, is the quality of the product that was only possible with Japan's strong commitment to inclusiveness and excellence and its understanding of the need for a strong document to guide the CCPCJ for the next five years. For Canada, what was surprising during the negotiations of the Kyoto Declaration, and it still is today, is how much the principle of agreed language from consensus as recent as the Doha, what the Doha Declaration called for, was called into question. As an example, and Catalyst can speak much better than me on this issue, we still cannot understand why in Doha, during the thirteenth Congress, heads of government agreed to enhance equality for all persons before the law, including gender equality for individuals belonging to minority groups and for indigenous people. But during the Kyoto negotiations, new and largely unexplained red lines suddenly appeared on what we wanted to call for the need to foster partnerships with indigenous people. If anything, such a mention was even more important than in twenty fifteen, given the growing awareness of the indigenous, of the over-representation of indigenous people and marginalized communities in the criminal justice system. Another concern we had was about the debates surrounding the Declaration's language on human rights, an issue that is at the heart of the mandate of our Crime Commission and that was given by the General Assembly in nineteen ninety-one. The significance of safeguarding fundamental hu- human rights in the context of crime prevention and criminal justice in, is undeniable for anyone who is familiar with the criminal justice system. On the positive side, however, Canada was very pleased with having a strong reference to restorative justice processes and the need to promote rehabilitative, uh, rehabilitative environment and correctional facilities. The reintegration of offenders is essential to preventing crime and reducing restivism, and we were pleased this year again with the government of Japan's resolution asking to convene an intergovernmental group of experts following the very important group of experts that met and that produced a significant document serving as a framework for their discussions. There are also so many other issues that I would have liked to mention uh, from our interesting but at times difficult negotiations, including how essential it is for all member states to mainstream agenda perspective and take a victim-centered, trauma-informed approach, the importance of protecting journalists who on a daily basis risk their lives doing their work, the important role that Anna just spoke about of civil society in fulfilling the commitments made in the Kyoto Declaration, and cybercrime, yes, which will be at the heart of much of our work within the next two, three years. But no doubt, my other colleagues will have other very interesting views in this regard. In the end, the virtual negotiations that lasted past the deadline and often very late at night, especially for those of you who were in Vienna, were a memorable experience. Ambassador Hikihara and his excellent team, and indeed, all member states can be proud of the outcome. Now, let's ensure that we honor their efforts by working to implement the Declaration together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. uh, Lucy Andrew, for your remarks and perspectives, especially on the, the rich history of, uh, congresses, and also point, uh, highlighting, uh, the important topics from your perspectives, including the indigenous, um, people and human rights. And also, thank you for your support on the Kyoto Declaration and appreciation to my ambassador, who I think were working at, working until four AM and start working at nine AM, something, something like that, so. So thank you very much. So our second distinguished speaker is Mr. Kamal Mohammed El Basari. You have the floor.
Thank, thank you, and I'm joining my previous colleague and thanking the government of Japan for inviting me to speak before this panel discussion. Actually, she mentioned and she praised the Kyoto Declaration, that everyone has the same point of view, this is like the bible in this regard for crime prevention, and trying to relate it on how to achieve sustainable development, which is something in favor of everyone, developing and developed countries. So thanks to the main theme of Japan and the preparation that took into consideration, uh, regional consultation some years before that. The importance of Kyoto Declaration, as I mentioned, this is the bible in this regard, so it's a, an inclusive document that, uh, bringing together, uh, different stakeholders, governmental and non-governmental, and it takes into consideration interests and concerns for everyone. So I doubt if there is any sort of crime that is not mentioned there. So I'm sure, yeah, even now, the cybercrime, which is the latest to be tackled here, it's been there. Uh, so that's the main point here. Uh, this is a guidance document that we can resort to over fif- five years until we are heading to the next one. Uh, there was, uh, some lessons learned, uh, and experience during the negotiations since I am representing one of the experts who took part of that. And first thing I should highlight is the undeniable role of the Chair, Ambassador Hikihara, and his excellent teams in trying to reach consensus and compromise. Uh, uh, I'm afraid that he raised the, the bar and the ceiling for anyone to come after him because, uh, we are human beings, we have a limit for being patient, but he himself, he's, he's, he made it difficult for anyone else. Uh, so also, it is the inclusiveness of the document that it included and tried to mitigate everyone's concern and to highlight the priorities of, of everyone, which is what such a document should, uh, follow. And about being, uh, compromised and consensus, I, I recall the paragraphs on terrorism that the Chair called for in-person meeting few days before the deadline. It wasn't scheduled, and unfortunately, we all heard that if we couldn't reach consensus in that, such, uh, paragraph will be taken away and out from the document. That's why it was a moment when everyone started feeling and taking it's the responsibility in this regard. Uh, that was extra, extra, uh, effort from the Chair. Uh, for my country, uh, we paid attention to the cultural propriety. Uh, we weren't sure there would be a separate paragraph on this issue or not because earlier there was this section of emerging and new and evolving crimes. Uh, so the Chair was telling, let's wait until the end to see, and it happened that several countries came with their own interest in such a kind of crime, including crimes that affect in the environment. Uh, so we were lucky at the end to have such a para in this regard. Uh, I've been supported by everyone, uh, in the room to find consensus because sometimes, uh, people wanted to have a shopping list or not shopping list, that was one of the main issues that we listened and heard a lot during negotiations. Uh, and also, I would like briefly to, uh, to highlight that Egypt is taking, uh, initiative at national and regional, uh, levels in this regard uh, for the cultural propriety. Uh, until twenty twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty, uh, there was a resolution on this issue. Unfortunately, it's supposed to be after Unfortunately, it's supposed to be after Kyoto, but because of the pandemic, it happens that vice versa, the resolution first and then Kyoto. In the next fall, in September, Egypt is convening a conference on protecting cultural heritage, bringing together key countries of origin, transit, and destination for such, let's say, stolen objects. And it's been supported by the UNO DC in terms of substantive preparation and so on. And also, it has the regional aspect with cooperation with some Mediterranean countries. So there will be like three phases in this regard, reaching here to Vienna, we hope, before the next ONTO COP, so we can showcase what happened in this regard. Thank you one more time to you and to your chairmanship and the two old colleagues here. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Kamal. Thank you very much, especially for highlighting your interesting experience in the negotiation process of the Kyoto Declaration. And also, with regard to the cultural property, yes, many countries, including our countries, have a rich amount of cultural property. So I think we share the concerns, I mean, issues, and looking forward to improve the situation on this regard. Thank you very much. So our third distinguished speaker is Mr. Carlos Alberto Garcia Reyes. So you have the floor, Carlos.
Thank you, distinguished moderator. Good morning to some of you, good afternoon, good night. When you say my name, it sounds longer than it is. Allow me to first begin by thanking you for inviting me to this panel. It's indeed a great opportunity for myself to be here with experts, with colleagues that definitely have raised the bar high enough for me not to reach. The experience that Lucy has, it's remarkable. Same with my other colleagues. I wish I had that experience the day that I get it. I'm gonna be 100% happy. For me, at least, the negotiations started on the right side of the bed. We woke up with the right foot and we started walking happily. The first meeting, I remember traveling to Kyoto, 8, 9, 10, and 11 September 2019, not knowing that a few months later, we were gonna be hit by one of the strongest pandemics of our era, something that many of us had never lived before, something that we have had to learn how to live with it. And that definitely came to change the perspective on how the Kyoto Congress was gonna happen. We all were expecting to go to that magnificent hall that we had visited and to see so much side events, to see all the expositions and all the NGOs participating and the shows and the visits. Looking forward for in-person participation. Didn't happen, but in my capacity, the dream kept on going. It was a marvelous opportunity for me to learn from experts, from NGOs, from civil society, from everyone on how a crime congress should happen. And definitely, like my colleagues have said before, as you can see, I brought something written, but I'm not gonna read it. The ability of Japan, of the government of Japan, of the Ministry of Justice to do something in that specific moment was remarkable. How you adapted, how your government adapted to the new normal, which at that moment was completely abnormal. Again, Lucy mentioned that I know a little bit better than her about some topic, but it's not true. It's just that I live in a country that has more than 24 languages and 24 indigenous peoples, groups officially recognized by a constitution. And for us, was a big loss not having such a topic in the Kyoto Declaration, but it was also a big win, knowing that there were some countries that even having indigenous peoples, we're not willing to recognize them still today. And it is saddening, but at the same time, a wake-up call for all of us to realize that there's certain amount of things going on that we're not willing to admit for X, Y, or Z reasons, and I'm not gonna go into that. But definitely, as Kamal said, the patience shown by your ambassador in those difficult moments, and I still remember some of the parts of the negotiation in which it was tense and I started getting messages, Carlos, are you okay? What did you say? What happened here? It was extremely amazing. It was a wake-up call again to see that what I had thought it was gonna be, it was even better. Going to my written notes, it was a difficult negotiation. I'm not gonna say no. It was difficult, but it was delightful at the same time. Because I was able to hear from different experts from all around the world, from every single possible language, what were their views that we should have or that we had to have inside the Declaration. And of course, Lucy also mentioned, it's always difficult to speak after her, we all wanted a concise declaration, a concrete declaration, and it was not possible. But again, Kamal was also right when he said, how could we have something small and short when there's such a huge amount and vast amount of crimes that we have to deal with? And in this Declaration, we had some moments of discrepancy, of allegations, not allegations, but more like arguments going on in which, should it be a call for action? Should it be a political declaration? Should it be a document that is targeted towards practitioners to have in their hand and to be able to work better in their own context? And it turns out that it was all of them at the same time. We came up with something, and I'm saying we, I didn't do that much, but we came up with something at the last minute that was useful for everybody, for authorities, for practitioners, for civil society, for academia, for youth, for children, for elderly, for whoever you want. And it's something that we have to be extremely proud of because I think that the moment that we were negotiating in or at was not the most easy one because we were, again, Lucy said it better, online, different times, different schedules. People from the USA, for example, waking up at 4 o'clock in the morning to follow a negotiation from Canada. I'm not gonna say Guatemala because they were still sleeping at some point. But it was very difficult to have these negotiations in that context, and we still did. Different things are that I can mention, and I'll try to close very fast. I always say that in these rooms, in these halls, we diplomats, dressed with a tie and a suit, we negotiate, we speak, especially me, I speak a lot. But we speak and we negotiate for long hours. But the ones suffering are those ones on the streets, walking on a daily life, having to leave their houses, their families behind, and walk for hours to get to the nearest market, to the nearest school, to the nearest clinic or hospital. Those are the ones suffering, and those are the ones that I had in my mind when negotiating the Declaration. Those people from my community, indigenous people, from any group of Guatemala, that they have to walk long hours and leave their children behind with no nanny whatsoever, but the older brother or the oldest sister to take care of them. Those were the ones in my head. And then, of course, comes not least relevant, not less relevant, equally relevant, civil society, academia, NGOs, private sector, public sector. We all play a role in this, and there's always been the conversations of cooperation, international cooperation. But more than international cooperation, I would say it's international collaboration because it has to go hand to hand. I mean, it has been proven that we cannot fight certain amount of crimes by ourselves. We have to have that alliance with civil society, with private sector, with academia because the views that civil society have, the views that academia have are not those most of the time of the ones of the governments. And their views, their good experiences, and also their obstacles are useful for us to improve our laws, to improve our policies. There's no such thing as a perfect law or a perfect policy. The press, going back to that again, in my opinion, it plays an extremely important role as well. But the good press, that one that will not create divisionism, that one that will inform people on what's going on, what are their rights? What should they do? What should they not do? The good press is also needed, not that one. And I'm thankful for the press members that always put their line, their life in the line of fire because those are very brave. We sadly had an incident a few days, week ago, and it's devastating to see that that happens, but they are still willing to do it for us. Allow me to finish, and this is the only part that I'm gonna read because I don't remember it exactly. By saying that, in my personal capacity, in my own opinion, from the Kyoto Declaration, in my context, we need to focus on addressing the causes, the root causes of crime, to create evidence-based crime prevention strategies and policies, create and strengthen tailor-made crime prevention strategies, mainstream a gender perspective into crime prevention, definitely and most definitely involve and educate children and youth in crime prevention, and empower youth for crime prevention. We always hear that children are the future of the world. No, they're not. They're the present. And they are a present to us. They teach us with their innocence how to see the world in a better way. They fall down, they step up, and they keep on playing. That should be our motto. Let's keep on trying. Let's keep on working to achieve something good. They will be the decision-makers tomorrow. But with this political declaration or with this Kyoto Declaration, I think we managed somehow to clean up a little bit the path, to try to set up a good way through and leave them a better future. That's what we're trying to do, and I think the Kyoto Declaration did that, at least for five years. Because I hope that three years from now, more or less, we're gonna be able to say, well, we accomplished most of what we wrote in those papers. And I really hope to see all of you again, not in a panel, but in the corridors, without a mask, with a mask. I really don't mind the masks at all anymore. But it's good to be here, and again, thank you for considering me to be an expert. I'm not an expert, I'm just Carlos, in this excellent group of experts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carlos. I could feel your passion, and I can easily imagine that in the negotiation Kyoto Congress, I can easily imagine that you made a good contribution, a good intervention, just like today. And thank you also for reminding us once again who we are trying to save. It's vulnerable people, including children and women. So I was really impressed on your intervention on this regard. Thank you very much. So our fourth distinguished speaker is Mr. Luigi Ripamonti, who is joining online from Italy today. So Luigi, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, moderator. I hope you can hear me well.
A second. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. First of all, I wish to thank Japan and especially the Chair of the CCP CJ, Ambassador Ikar for the invitation. It's a pleasure to contribute to this special event, and I'm very glad to see so many colleagues and friends in the room, on the podium, and apologies for not being there in person this time. I'd start by, like others, by recalling the challenging circumstances in which the Declaration was negotiated. COVID-19 pandemic, postponement of the dates for the Congress, consultations held online. Despite this, I think the Declaration is a very sound, well-structured, and politically meaningful document, and one which has already produced significant follow-up initiatives. So I think Ambassador Ikar, as Chair of the consultations, deserves, certainly deserves, credit for this. Today, I'd like to focus on one area in which Italy was at the forefront during the negotiations, which is the concept of and importance of addressing the economic dimension of crime. It's a multifaceted concept, which refers to a number of phenomena. Illegal markets managed by organized criminal groups, the infiltration of criminal organizations into the legal economy, the negative effects of crime on socioeconomic developments, as well as the recognition that sustainable development enables states to effectively prevent the combat of crime. We have promoted inclusion of this formulation in the Declaration. You found it in paragraph 24. And this was done in continuity with what had already been stated the year before, the Resolution 10, that's for, by the ONTO COP, a resolution on the 25th anniversary of the ONTO. Behind this concept is the recognition that organized criminal groups have been able to take advantage of the opportunities offered by globalization and technological progress in order to gain more economic and financial power. So they might be, in some cases, less violent or less visible than before, again, at least in certain contexts. But nonetheless, they represent a form that was threats to our economy as well as to our democracy and the rule of law, also fans to the network of professional service providers they can often rely on. So it is imperative, and this is very well recognized in the Declaration, to step up efforts, including through international cooperation, to deprive criminals of their economic power. Follow the money remains today, more than ever, a key principle and the methods, I would say, to combat transnational organized crime. And if you read the Kyoto Declaration carefully, you can recognize that there is a sort of file rouge which develops this idea through concrete measures that states have committed to take. So in the interest of time, I'll mention just a few examples. Again, you take paragraph 24, the emphasis on the need to deprive criminals of any illicit gains through seizing, confiscating, and recovering in pursuit of crime, the reference to robust frameworks for financial investigations and for preventing money laundering. Paragraph 25, which encourages the adoption of efficient measures to regulate the management of seized and confiscated assets. Paragraph 55, which focuses on the links between organized crime and corruption. And this also speaks to the needs of promoting a holistic approach to the fight against crime, including through the harmonization of the normative tools and investigative techniques which are used to address this distinct but often interrelated phenomenon. So I could go on with other examples, but the point here that this concept of the economic dimension of crime is very well established in the Declaration and is complemented by references, other references from the Declaration to a number of tools and measures that states are provided with as guidance for their criminal policies. So what happens after Kyoto, since the event today, is focused also on the follow-up? Well, it's important to know that follow-up to this commitment is already gone. Paragraph 96 of the Declaration mandates the Commission to promote its implementation, and also thanks to the support of Japan. Last year, important intercessional meetings in the Commission were held. This has already been recalled today. In particular, in the November meeting of the chairmanship of Ambassador Cortese of Italy, there was a fruitful discussion which focused, among other topics, on the concept of addressing the economic dimension of crime. And it brought together experts from other states, international organizations, and civil society. So we took this opportunity last November to share our experience we have had in Italy in addressing the economic dimension of crime, in particular by focusing on one aspect, which is the experience in using the confiscated assets for social purposes, with the support and in partnership with civil society and NGOs. and in partnership with civil society and NGOs, and this is something which many states are looking with interest. So I think these are very important initiatives. Exchange among experts, so they ensure, and I think that there will be other intercessional meetings this year, the international community is serious about translating the commitments made in the Declaration into concrete action, which is, again, what matters. So I know we are running a bit late, so I'll stop here. Thank you very much, and greetings from Rome.
Thank you, Luigi, for your kind intervention and sharing your country's experience. That was really much appreciated. Thank you very much. So our fifth distinguished speaker is Mr. Said Norretti. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, June. Being the penultimate speaker, yeah, penultimate speaker, it's always difficult, especially for experienced experts, and I, like Carlos, am not an expert by any means, and in fact, was not even in Kyoto, so I cannot set up the Lucy who's been in process since Cuba in 1990. But in any case, I must thank Japan, particularly Ambassador Takashi Hikihara, first in guiding the difficult but ultimately successful negotiations on the Kyoto Declaration, and now as Chair of the CCPCJ for his effective leadership in ensuring the balanced implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. Certainly, previous colleagues have mentioned how difficult the drafting of the Kyoto Declaration was. It took place under very challenging circumstances, not least because of the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, colleagues will recall how we were probably the last delegates to leave the VIC that day in March 2020, and then before the first of many lockdowns in Vienna. But nevertheless, we persevered, you know, the negotiation continued, mostly virtually, and I think there was a bit of innovation, which of course now we come to accept as a norm to many extent, but we are of course glad that things have come, have come back to sort of pre-COVID situation, and we are happy to be able here, to be here today to speak to each other in person. So, I mean, in any event, the Kyoto Crime Progress was postponed, but we continued the negotiations, and, you know, it was finally adopted 11 months after it was supposed to be adopted. But crucially, you know, steps are being taken to implement the commitments in the Kyoto Declaration at various levels since its adoption in March last year. In the case of Singapore, addressing the economic dimension of crime and strengthening international cooperation to deprive criminals of their proceeds of crime is particularly important. In July this year, Singapore will assume the presidency of the Financial Action Task Force. In that capacity, we are committed to spearheading global efforts in strengthening Fedex Framework for Asset Recovery to deprive criminals of their proceeds, fostering closer cooperation and galvanizing a coordinated global response against financial crimes. I remember the difficult discussions on the operative paragraphs under the headings Addressing the Economic Dimensions of Crime and International Cooperation to Deprive Criminals of Their Proceeds of Crime. Ultimately, we were able to come to a consensus on the various paragraphs despite differing views, because, to quote Ambassador Hikihara during the negotiations, "No one can oppose the notion that we have to deprive criminals of any illicit gains." So reducing reoffending through rehabilitation and reintegration is another area that is critical to Singapore's criminal justice and crime prevention strategy. We invest significantly to rehabilitate offenders. We adopt evidence-informed rehabilitation practices and work closely with the community to help ex-offenders reintegrate into society. We therefore, during the preparatory process in 2019, you know, supported foregrounding the concept of reintegration in the Declaration. And of course, you know, we have that whole piece, 37 to 40, in the Declaration, and we're glad that Japan is taking up this issue, especially, you know, we have L4 in this CCPCJ on the particular resolution. In Singapore's case, our Yellow Ribbon Project movement is aimed at creating awareness of the challenges faced by ex-offenders in reintegration and increase acceptance and community action to support their reintegration. We provide psychology-based correctional programs to equip offenders with pro-social skills to manage thinking and behaviors. We also provide skills training, job preparation, and education programs to better prepare them to lead productive and crime-free lives upon their release. This year, we launched a new digital literacy master plan to equip inmates with basic digital skills relevant to workplace applications and expanded existing initiatives. This, we hope, will enhance inmates' employability and their reintegration into society. Certainly, you know, this Declaration and the format it is, it's much more readable, as Carlos mentioned. It helps practitioners as well as laypeople understand what we as a CCPCJ are doing and what, you know, in society can help each other to advance this whole endeavor. And Singapore, for our part, remains committed to international efforts to advance crime prevention, criminal justice, and the rule of law. Together, we believe we will achieve the objectives set out in the Kyoto Declaration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Said. Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing your international initiatives on another good component, which is asset recovery, and also reducing reoffending as well. Thank you very much. So our last, but of course not least, speaker, excuse me, is Virginia Prue. So you have the floor.
Thank you very much to the Government of Japan for giving me this opportunity, one of many opportunities that the Government of Japan has given me in relation to the Kyoto Declaration and also the Kyoto Congress. And let me just say that I think we focus so much on the outcome document that sometimes we forget that the outcome document is just one element of the Congress, and the Congress itself is an integral, important, fundamental part of our program of criminal justice and crime prevention, and it serves as the incubator for the ideas that then become our standards and norms. And June, I know you know this, in the negotiations we're currently having on the reducing reoffending resolution, there is a proposal to build on the standards of norms, and it is getting opposition in the room, which is shocking. That's, this is our bread and butter. This is the work that we do, and if we won't take that into consideration, how can we ask anybody else to? I mean, this is, it's just, but it raises the same issue that I think, Lucy, you raised, which is when we come into the negotiations, we have delegations or delegates, I should say, raising issues with language terminology that we have accepted in the past. I remember in Doha, when the culture of lawfulness was first raised, there were one or two delegates, "What is this? We've never heard of this." And we had to say, "Oh, please, go to your compendium and look at page, you know, so-and-so, and you will find a document there that's entitled 'The Culture of Lawfulness' that was adopted by the General Assembly on the recommendation of a Crime Congress through the CCPCJ many years ago." We come to Kyoto, and we have the same issue, only now this misinformation, this disinformation has spread, and now there are many delegations that raise questions about, "What is this culture of lawfulness? I've never heard of this. What is this?" And I think this is all indicative of a problem that we have, which is this constant turnover of delegates coming into Vienna who don't really know what they're supposed to be doing, and they don't know the history and how they've gotten to where they are and what these various meetings mean. If you are participating in a conference of parties to the TOC, that is not the same thing as being in the CCPCJ. In the CCPCJ, you are a member of a delegation of a country that has been elected, one of 40 countries, to represent the entire global community. In contrast with the TOC, you're a member of a state party that has ratified a treaty. You have a stake in the obligations. So each one of these is different. And when we come to the Crime Congress, I think the meeting itself has somehow gotten lost at times in this swirl we have of questioning the motives of civil society and, you know, what are they trying to do, and why are they trying to tell governments this, and, you know, looking with suspicion, when in fact we should be opening the door to say, "Come on down, give us your ideas." Wacko ideas and great ideas, we want to hear them all, and then we will work with them, and from those we will get the ones that are worthy of going forward. Now, I do want to say that the Kyoto Congress very smartly, from the very beginning, did a number of things that, and I should say the Congress, I mean the Government of Japan, of course, did some things that were very smart and very beneficial. One of the first things was, as we were adopting the Doha Declaration, we were congratulating Japan on the acceptance of their offer to host the next Crime Congress. So as we were launching one, we were also beginning the preparations for the other, and that early preparation is really key to getting a successful Congress. And then Japan was very smart in reaching out to those who had experience with the Congress, to representatives from Ministry of Justice, to civil society, and I see Eduardo over there, he was one, and Matty, two, to solicit views and input on where should we go with this Congress. Now, Doha gave us a structure and a methodology, which frankly was new, the fact that we even had a structure and we had a methodology, but it was a very basic one. And the Government of Japan took that and built it into a much more comprehensive and deliberate approach to our work. One of the more innovative things was having the regional sessions, the regional meetings, and having, you know, governments come together to identify on a regional basis, what are your priorities? And then the Government of Japan presented those priorities to their Ministry of Justice, their experts, particularly the experts dealing in international cooperation measures, so that they could distill those down into discreet and concrete areas where we could see, there were many governments, for example, who were interested in reducing recidivism and reform in this area, so that was a common theme. Another common theme became the 2030 Agenda, like, how can we use our Congress to further the 2030 Agenda? So through this very deliberate thinking, we ended up with an early identification of the priorities. From that, we were able to identify the theme, we were able to identify the workshops, and there, we've heard mention of the PNI. I think we could not have done the Congress without the incredible legwork that our program network institutes contributed, Kiuni, UNIFEE, my own National Institute of Justice, the Thai Institute, there were a number that really had tremendous things. Yes, okay, so I'm getting the hook. Let me just quickly summarize, because I did want to say a couple of things. Number one, let's think about in the future having an education program in UNODC in Vienna so that new delegates coming in can learn a little bit of our history, and we don't have to repeat the wheel, you know, every single time. Some innovative things that we have done, thanks to the Government of Japan, the multi-gear work plan coming out of Kyoto, the fact that we use this structure of identifying the priorities also as the structure, the beginning structure, at least for the Declaration itself, was a very innovative thing to do and something we should keep. We are continuing with the thematic discussions, will be identifying new interests coming out of those, hopefully that will feed on to the next. There was a comment about one has ended and another begins. Lucy, you probably have the same experience, these Congresses do not end. You know, we still have Bangkok, we still have Salvador, we still have Doha, and we still have, you know, even Cuba back there, and we will have Kyoto as well. I will, I think, try to put this into writing and send a little blurb that maybe could be addressed, but again, thank you very much. It was a wonderful experience. I've been privileged to represent my government, but I have to say, it's also been a burden. And, you know, the 4:00 AM meetings and in Salvador, having the ambassador know that we stayed up until 5:00 AM in Bangkok, and so he was determined that we would break that record, and we did. So with that, thank you again very much, and thank you to all the other participants. It was really great hearing from you.
Thank you very much, Paul, for your kind words to the efforts made by Japanese government. So this is the end of the panel discussion. Thank you very much to all the listening panelists. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys. I have to perhaps conclude our session in one or two minutes. So first, a big, big thanks for all the speakers and panelists for sharing their thoughts and insight, and definitely, it was very, very clear that our marginal strengthening of marginal coordination and cooperation among all stakeholders at all level is of essence for the implementation of the Kyoto Declaration. And I'm sorry for those who wanted to take the floor for their comments or questions. If you wish so, please send to the secretary at your source in writing, we would be much grateful for that. And also, I thank you, all of you, for joining us today for the lunchtime. You may have sacrificed your food for body for this lunch, but definitely you gain for the food for souls in our endeavor. So thank you so much for all of you. Thank you.